Good evening. We would like to call the Monday, July seventeenth Richmond City School Board Meeting to order.
For the board members of present to this conference, Mr. Barner.
Here.
Ms. Maine Erv.
Here.
Here.
Ms. Cosby.
Here.
Ms. Owen.
Here.
Dr. Sapien.
Yes.
Ms. Page.
Yes.
You have the chair. So anyone who needs interpretive services?
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez.
The next item is one point zero two, your pledge allegiance followed by a moment of silence.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, moment of silence in memory of a former Richmond Public Schools staff member, Ms. Margaret Howlett, who was funeralized on last week, she gave her service to Richmond Public Schools over fifty-five years. And she retired at the age of seventy-seven. So we would like a moment of silence to be in honor of Ms. Margaret Howlett, in memory of Ms. Margaret Howlett. May be seated.
The next item is one point zero three, the addition of the agenda. I don't have any changes, Madam Chair, you want a motion? I move the addition of the agendas, please. Item three point zero one. I'm sorry, three point zero two is to be deferred. And that's the only change I have. And Ms. Owen?
Okay. It's been moved by Ms. Owen and seconded by Ms. Cosby. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any opposeds? The agenda will be received as approved, amended.
The next item is one point zero four, to approve the minutes of the June fifth, two thousand seventeen meeting. And those minutes were sent to you off of review. I have not received any edits or changes. I just ask that you approve them at this time.
In motion? Seeing that we have no changes to the minutes, they will be approved as received.
I have one person who signed up in advance for public information. And what is your pleasure, Madam Chair?
If you're speaking as an individual, you have three minutes. If you're speaking on behalf of a group, you have five minutes. And as you come forward, please sign in and state your name.
Ms. Sally Hamilton. Come forward, ma'am. Yes.
Come on to the podium.
Hello, everyone. I want to thank you all for our opportunity.
Just leave it right there, but everyone, please, thank you.
Thank you again for this opportunity. So I can present what I have in my heart while I'm here. It happened during Memorial Day, around that time. I was listening to the national news, the night of the national news. And I heard that it was a state in the United States, not Virginia, but another state in the United States, that the schools, when the children would go, when lunchtime came around, the children would go to the cafeteria with bands around their wrists, saying, "I can't afford to pay for my lunch." And I said, "Well, this really hurt me because we shouldn't treat our children like that." And I said, "I'm gonna have to contact the Board of Education here and let them know what I heard and that maybe we can, we can kind of do something about that." You know, that's not, a child can grow up with all kind of obvious against that and, you know, feel ashamed and degraded. That's, that's awesome. You shouldn't ever treat a child like that, or anyone. So I prayed about it and it just gave my, my soul. But you know, we were, all of us were born, was a born talent. Our children, all ages, all of us in here, are born with a talent. And if we get those talents together, teach those children how to seek out their talents, how to search for them and what they really love to do. Not copyright, copycat, brother, but born talents. They can do concerts, plays, animated movies, movies, all kind of technology.
Thirty seconds.
And, you know, they can perform all kind of beautiful, get together, all kind of beautiful programs together with their natural born talents. And this will feed their bodies as well as their souls. And they won't be hurting anymore. If you need a playground, put on a, put on a, a, a play or, or concert. Fix up that playground, you know? Go to the Boys and Girls Club of America.
Aye.
Go to some of the churches and get these kids together and hit them off the street, too. Oh, now I want, I have, uh... I'm an author, I write books and I have some books I want to get to, uh... Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. If we have other members in the audience that would like to come forward at this time, please do so.
Good evening, I'd like to call Bo Jones Jr., senior up. I'm speaking on behalf of the Richmond NAACP, the Richmond Junior Branch of the NAACP. Good evening, I'd like to introduce Bo Jones Jr. He's a state championship coach. He coached at Huguenat for over thirty years. I'd like to introduce Bo Jones Jr. He's the capital, I mean, the media district champion, coach, coach of the year, also Coach Jones was coach of the year. My thing is, is that Bo Jones Jr. was, was working for, and coached for over ten years for Huguenat girls' program. He was treated unfairly and unjust. And also, we as the Richmond, um, the NAACP Richmond Branch asked for a thorough investigation from the school board on his hiring process or the process of hiring the basketball coach. First of all, Coach Jones was unfairly treated and he was unfairly targeted by the A.D., the athletic director over at Huguenat. And also the athletic director, which was the charge of also instructions, Dr. Ramsey. And then he had responded to Huguenat, where he was unfairly targeted. Uh, also, with the hiring process with Mr. Jones, they had him and Mr. Brown, which who eventually became the head basketball coach for Huguenat, for the basketball team, uh, together at the same time waiting to be interviewed. Uh, and the thing was that Mr. Brown knew what time Mr. Jones' interview was. That, that is very disturbing that he knew what time, that any coach. And then the other thing was, it was out, there was no outside, uh, individuals. And I, I was on the hiring process and this was the case at Armstrong High School, where we all, when we hired, um, um, for the girls' basketball, um, tennis coach or anything, uh, any coach, it was no one that was, um, a subordinate to anything. Ultimately, it was totally unfair to Mr. Jones. The thing is that he was done. And especially as they had an insult to injury, the day of the ban, they had him to sit back in the back and not with the other coaches. He was still a coach. They made him resign. They made him resign, but they didn't make Mr. Jones resign from his A.D. position over at Armstrong. He's still the athletic director over at Armstrong. That's unfair, but they made Coach Jones resign. And so in order to apply for the boy's job, he had to, uh, he had to resign. But they did not give Mr. Jones, that's, I mean, Mr. Brown, the same treatment. So he was unfairly treated in that order, in that manner, too. Also, there was a lot of other things that we can go along with this with. Um, during the, um, us, um, through a cell phone conversation at times, of having to interview the position as a head coach at Huguenat, um, that chose time, he, uh, Mr. Jones chose time at ten in the morning. And Mr. Brown knew what time his time was. Uh, also, during that same phone conversation above, um, he was told to bring any material with him. Um, he was told that the interview would be, in the interview, he would be interviewed by six outside individuals. But it ended up being Dr. Ramsey, uh, also Ms. Collins, Mr. Gilshott, the principal, Dr. Haynes, their assistant principal, Coach Jennings, the, um, the football coach, and Coach Booker, the wrestling coach. So he, he was not afforded that either. What we want is, we want action. We want that this interview process is redone. We want a meeting for Mr. Jones, um, Mr. Krantz, Mrs. Paige, and also Mrs., uh, Dr. Sapien, and also Mr. Young. Um, this is very important and essential that we get this cleared up and aired clear. And we think that this organization is supposed to be reopened and reclassified and that give Mr. Jones the opportunity to, to give a fair shot and get every, everyone a fair shot. Actually, and we would ask for Mr. Brown to be eliminated. Either he resigns as the A.D. at Armstrong, just like Mr. Jones had to do, or he, he shouldn't have a position. And those are our demands. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, School Board members. My name is Anne Slate Perkins. It was stunning after listening to all of the testimony given at last year's budget sessions that there has been no movement on the facilities plan. At the recent June nineteenth meeting of this board, we listened to a representative from George Mason remind us how deplorable the conditions are at the school. Action is needed now on Mason. We cannot continue to ignore this crisis. Additionally, it is time for forward movement on the facilities. This will likely entail some tough discussions and hard decisions. The Facility Needs Report is a very thorough document and will help make the movement forward easier. The previous board did vote to approve option five of that. It would be great to see endorsement by this board with funding identified and recommendations for Phase One of the CIP this fall. I am hopeful that the proposed facility work group will spearhead movement on these facility needs and get us towards some real solutions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jessie Perry. I'm a resident of the third district. Um, I've read the Richmond, the Petersburg, and the Franklin City Memorandum of Understanding. Of the three, Richmond's is the most restrictive that is currently, that I can find. Two specific examples of this are where state and federal funds have to be approved, not just reviewed. In addition, the ability to change the document without board approval does lie with the VBOE. So I'd like to urge you all to come together and provide feedback on this document to VBOE with the spirit and intent of creating more favorable language for two reasons. First of all, this degree of oversight removes power from the local board. When your, well, nine, eight of your nine constituents voted you into office, they vested in you their power. The reason you have authority is because the people granted it to you. And as our elected officials, we trust you to protect that power. Second of all, listening to the VBOE meeting where the first draft of the MOU was released, they were very clear that the intent of this entire process is to be collaborative with the local division. As the MOU is currently written, it does not reflect that intent of collaborative behavior. Providing feedback on this document will be a step towards that collaboration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, here was a School Board, my name is Charles, well, I come representing two organizations. One is the Jeff Davis Neighborhood Civic Association, and the other is United Communities Against Crime. I'll speak first of all of United Communities Against Crime. We want to invite each and every one of you out to a prayer vigil that's being held. It's a regional prayer vigil that's taking place this Wednesday at six o'clock at the, uh... And please forgive me for not having the address in mind, but if you all are familiar with Nine Mile Road, where the new Walmart's being built, that's a Saber Lot, as you hear down on the left-hand side where the Burger King used to be. In the Saber Lot, there's a location, a daycare there. That daycare is where the three young folks that lost their lives attended that daycare. Uh, and the family has asked United Communities Against Crime to conduct a prayer vigil that we have. Being these are school-aged young folks, and I've heard from folks all over the state that have expressed an interest in whatever they can do to help. I'm just sharing with the School Board that I learned so much that you're more than welcome to join us in representation from other districts, school districts across the state, as well as fire departments and others. So please, if your schedule allows, then please join us this Wednesday at, uh, six o'clock at that parking lot location. And of course, the services, the home-going services for the young folks, the, uh, will be this Friday at Phil Baptist Church at one o'clock. That's this Friday, uh, at Phil Baptist Church at one o'clock. The other I shall, want to share with you is that, on a more happy note, Madam Clerk, I do have some flyers here, that I, I would love to have each and every one of you all join us on August the first. August the first is National Night Out. It's a day where we come together collectively to create activities, create awareness of the crime issues that plagues our city. And, uh, I'm, I'm very proud that, uh, during this time of the year, it's not a very happy one for me because I know when our kids are released for the summer, we always tend to lose so many young ones to, uh, activities that are not of such school, school-related. But this Tuesday, August first, from six to ten o'clock in the Jeff Davis area, uh, twenty-six hundred block of Quarter Street, we will be hosting our seventeenth annual, uh, Crime and Health Awareness Day. Uh, you see the flyers display some of the activities going, going on. And I'm very proud of one of Richmond Public Schools, well, actually, two of them, that attended Richmond Public Schools, young Chris Charles, which is now not only Richmond's ambassador, uh, bully, anti-bullying ambassador, but he was recently named, uh, two months ago as Virginia's anti-bullying ambassador. And this is a part of Richmond Public Schools, as well as young man you see on the flyer by the name of Jada. And Jada would share with you very happily, uh, not gracefully, I say gracefully, but not happily, that he's had some challenges. Young man that attended Richmond Public Schools, went to Buschell Middle School, did make some of the best choices. Landed himself in the Justice Center, Department of Correction, and got corrected. Brought to the attention of Sheriff Woody and, uh, became a model, one that, uh, would go back into society and could do some good for our young folks. And he's part of that program as well, that's, uh, reaching out across the barriers of, of our, uh, race relations. We have, uh, radio stations and DJs, uh, from the Latino community that is very important to us in that Jeff Davis area and Subsider area. So again, we ask that you join the mayor, the police chief, our council representatives, School Board representatives and others during that time of, uh, of enjoyment, come out, eat a hot dog, drink some water and join us. But also, uh, your representation would be very important to me and dear to me as we come together collectively to show the community that we are very serious about the crime issues that are going on in our community. And we want to do whatever we can to be proactive instead of reactive. I found out this, and I'll read you with these words, and I used to say often that you're either part of the problem or part of the solution. I found out now that you're either part of the solution or you are the problem. Thank you so much. God bless you. Mr. Krantz, welcome aboard.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes our public information period. Next item?
The next item is item three, academic improvement items. Three point zero one, discuss the Virginia Department of Education Memorandum of Edu, I'm sorry, Memorandum of Understanding and Corrective Action Plan.
Good evening, Madam Chairman and School Board. Uh, today, the intent of this is to give you a kind of a review, go quick, of the Memorandum of Understanding, as well as to include, which is not going to be shown on this PowerPoint, um, the comments and discussion that was held with the state earlier this afternoon, where we anticipate getting a revised MOU within the next day or two. Okay? So as you're going through this, understand that things are changing. The whole purpose of the MOU is to implement a corrective action plan in order to improve our student achievement with essential actions to comply with the five standards of quality priority, academics and student success, leadership and governance, operations and support services, human resource leadership, and community relations and communication. We've uploaded to Board Docs the ninety-two-page document that reflected the results of the academic review that was held a couple of months ago. Um, as you're going through, it ties to these five priority areas. You will see the subcategories within each priority. If the, if there's an X in the box, that means we've received the points. If there's a blank, that means we didn't receive the points during the review. You also will see below it the, um, documents that is a district we submitted for evidence of the things that we were doing. And, um, what will happen now as part of this whole MOU process is that they're going to take the items that have no X, put that into a corrective action template, similar to what you saw, um, the review today. We are now working with the state, um, to start filling in some of the blanks with the intent that that document will be approved by the School Board around November first. And you'll see on the approved, the document that we'll submit for approval, one that clearly lays out, uh, the dates of when we expect to have things completed by. And essentially, there's three main buckets that we'll be focusing on. One will be those items that we can get done quickly in like a zero-to-six-month period of time. Those items that are going to take anywhere from seven to twelve to twenty-four months. And then those items that they take longer than twenty-four months that we'll go through. In looking at what's the responsibility of video, be the Virginia Board of Education, the Department of Education, Department of Education, the MOU will remain in place until all schools are fully accredited. That is something that's a little bit different than what Petersburg has. But Petersburg, um, had their first MOU back in two thousand and two. And it's gone through many gyrations there. What the state has said is that this is also something that as we go through the corrective action plan and we complete things on that corrective action plan, you'll see a review being done of the MOU throughout the process. What the state also indicated is that the MOU, uh, and the CIP will, will kind of be in a limbo state. It'll be, it'll be firm, but it'll also be somewhat in limbo state until the permanent superintendent is brought on board. And then through the discussions with the permanent superintendent and their plans, uh, parts of the MOU may get modified at that point in time. There's a section that said the School Board Chair will meet at least twice per year with the State Superintendent and the VBOE President. That's now been changed, that it will be the entire board will be able to meet. Whether that'll be twice a year will depend honestly on our compliance with the, with the, uh, the CIP. Um, if we're showing as an administration progress on that CIP, then they're not going to hold meetings just to hold meetings. then they're not going to hold meetings just to hold meetings. Where they expect that you as a board are fully aware of what's going on with the MOU as well as the CAP is through the monthly reports that we're required under the MOU's administration to provide to the school. And that monthly report is where you're staying abreast and current in knowing where we are within our progress and if we're on the mark or not on the mark. And if we're not on the mark, what are we doing to get back onto the mark? Okay?
Mr. Krantz.
Yes, ma'am.
Could you also share with the board? Um, that language change is very similar to the way it's set up with Petersburg Public Schools with their MOU. They meet with the entire board so that the entire board can receive the same information at the same time.
So what Dr. Staples said, and Ms. Page is exactly right. What Dr. Staples said in our meeting is that this isn't a document that I got you document. It's intended to be a document that's a collaborative document, one that we all are working for the benefit of the students in Richmond. And that all of our students, 24,000 plus, are receiving the education that they all deserve. And that's the intent behind the agreement. It's not intended to be one of the state, uh, taking control of the school system or in any way usurping the power of the school board. It's intended to be one that says, look, you, the city of Richmond, city public schools, um, because all of our schools are not fully accredited, because of the results that they saw within the, the district-level academic review, that they believe some things need to be corrected and that if they are corrected in a timely manner, that we'll get back to where all the schools will be, will be fully accredited within a 10-year period of time. Okay? So it's not intended to be anything other than that. Number three, um, that state's hard. I will meet, or the permanent will meet, uh, with, uh, the Office of School Improvement every other month. Um, the state on 4A, on the original document, it said the state Office of School Improvement will review planned use of the local funds and provide feedback. The only thing there is they're removing the elimination on the focus of local funds. Um, their focus is going to be on academics. Uh, it's not going to be on the hiring and firing of personnel and it's not going to be on the local funds. Their emphasis will be on state and federal funds, which is consistent to what David Myers and I both believe was the intent of our document. Um, state OSI will approve in advance any expenditures of state and federal grants. There, they're going to focus on academics is the changing that they're making in their language. Um, it's not a focus on people. It's being a focus on the academic side. The thing to remember and we'll see this in two points. Um, the state will review new or modified instructional programs and our professional development and it's something that they will have to give approval to. Um, the state will review the CAP, the operations and support services, human resource leadership, and community relations and communications. Their focus there is ensuring that we have all the proper licensers, ensuring that we understand some of the experiences the state has learned over time. Uh, they are not using this point to be hired, to get involved in the hiring and firing of any school personnel. Okay? This is all remaining within the purview and control of the school board. And the BBOE will modify the MOU as progress is made. Um, they did agree that once that permanent superintendent's on board, there will be definitely another review done of the MOU at that point as well as the CAP. Um, what, this was a point I know on who would be the next superintendent. And the language that they're providing is basically that or comparable qualification. Um, in the opinion of Dr. Staples and I believe in listening to the way he presented it, that you as a board would have the discretion to select whichever candidate or candidates you may choose to. That there is no limitation. You just have to believe that the person you're recommending, which you would, is the most qualified for the position. So they're, they're, they're giving you the freedom to be as creative as you possibly want. Okay? Um, but the state will, they're looking for, you know, an individual who can get Richmond turned around and get it moving in what they believe is the right direction for all of our students who are in Richmond. Um, again, this is under what the city has to do, what we as a school board, school system has to do. We have to meet, I meet every two months with the Office of School Improvement, which we discussed. Um, this number three will get changed so that the use of the local fund will be removed. Uh, the expenditure to state and federal grants will be focused on the academic side and not on the hiring and firing of school personnel. Number four, uh, they're going to review all new and modified instructional pro- programs, annual professional development, it's a big point. That's not something that, uh, they're going to give that point up. Um, they will review the CAP for operations and support services, human resource and community relations, just as we discussed earlier under what the, the state's doing. Um, they're not doing it from a hiring and firing or us. They're looking at it from, oh, we can learn from them to improve and ensure we get things corrected in a timely manner. Um, we will, uh, the school board will provide a CAP and submit to the BBOE for approval at a time determined by the BBOE. The plan, that's the one that's going to be done on November first. That plan must include stakeholder input. Stakeholders is everybody. I mean, really stakeholders is everybody. It's the board, it's teachers and staff, it's the general public, it's parents. It's literally anybody inside the listening area that wants to become involved and has an opinion. They all are stakeholders. So it's anyone that is really a citizen of the state of Virginia, um, is able to voice their opinion and be heard. And this is something that, that it's been stressed to David and I that we must do a good plan with the stakeholder side. In their opinion, the one that Petersburg just completed was very sound.
Very what?
Very sound. It was a very good approach. Um, the RPS superintendent will provide the school board monthly updates about the CAP and then that information gets sent to BBOE as well. Um, RPS staff will participate in state professional development. That is, that is an emphasis that they're making to us. Uh, and there'll be no leeway for people to miss it. If it gets scheduled, then everybody needs to attend. That is something that we heard, David and I, very loud and clear from the state, is that maybe in the past, not all of us attended, and I'm saying all of us. That, um, but when we, when there's one schedule, we have to be there. We have to take this very seriously and, uh, and we have to show the commitment to get things corrected. Um, the school board and superintendent will appear before BBO, BBOE for updates as requested. Um, the school board and superintendent will participate in BSBA training annually. This was a point that Dr. Staples stressed, um, that the training with BSBA, BSBA must occur. Um, it must occur in a timely manner. So, um, I'm passing along what Dr. Staples stressed in our meeting. Um, and they are aware that the last one was canceled. Uh, they are looking for when that's going to be rescheduled. Um, if all schools are not accredited by 2026, the state will place a person on the RPS school board. Um, that one was not further discussed today. Um, it stayed on as it's currently written. Their belief is they've done a rubric and based off of what they took where our two were schools or the two furthest behind to getting fully accredited, um, they believe that in 10 years it can be done. Um, however, if we're not done in 10 years, then they get to put somebody on board in a non-voting position. Um, if we refuse to comply with the MOU for whatever reason, uh, and there'll be multiple occasions to correct anything that's, that's we stub our toes on, the penalty for the fund withheld is $30 million. So that's the real penalty from a potential non-compliance with the, uh, the program. That's my quick presentation of the MOU.
Question?
Ms. Kozie? Thank you, Madam Page. Um, Mr. Krantz, so thank you very much for the presentation and thank you to Madam Page and, uh, Mr. Krantz for having this conversation with Dr. Staples. And I'm glad to hear that some of the extremely prescript, prescriptive language has been relaxed a bit. Um, when can we expect to, a couple, a few questions, three questions. When can we expect to see the revised MOU from, from your meeting?
I would say in the next day.
Okay.
I would say in the next day.
All right. And then we can provide, review that and then provide additional emphasis?
Or, yes, ma'am. We got questions or comments? Yes.
Okay. And, uh, you talked about or emphasize stakeholder input. And you mentioned, uh, that they provided Petersburg as an example. And so what, what was the plan? What was, what did Petersburg have in place?
Well, basically what Petersburg did is once the CAP was held in the state, you know, the blank C A P and it listed out the items, which right now were 49 items that need to be corrected. Um, it had dates, it had names of personnel that were going to do it, um, as well as examples of things that would satisfy the evidentiary part of the review. Um, that's when they met with the stakeholders and asked the stakeholders to determine if this really was the things that should be focused on by the district or were there other things that needed to be focused on? Were there other areas that were causing the district not to be in compliance with the accreditation? As, as Dr. Staples and his team have said throughout the process, um, we can add things to the CAP. We can't take things away from the CAP, but things can be added. And they, they held one large general public meeting that they broke it apart into five, uh, subgroups and, and then people rotated amongst the five. And the, each five was the key five priority areas that I described at the beginning, how they did there, as I understand, reading some documentation. We obviously have talked to, uh, to Petersburg. The person that ran the stakeholder is somebody who was just hired by Petersburg, retired from another district, um, somebody who our team is well aware of and has the utmost respect for. And we'll get some input from them to ensure we do it correctly.
Okay, great. And, uh, can you, we've always focused on the MOU and, uh, I know that the findings are posted in Board Docs, but just for the benefit of our public that may not have been able to see it, can you give a highlight, um, some highlights of some of the findings and the significance of those findings?
Well, the things that the state, um, has stressed to us is that, number one, they didn't believe the district, um, treated, um, our current state as seriously as we needed to. And, and, um, that was more of from, um, our participation in professional development and things of that type. Um, a second thing is the challenges that Richmond has in finding qualified teachers. Um, as you're going to see tonight, um, you know, our HR department faces challenges as they've communicated previously to the board. Um, and, and starting the year, um, with a shortage of, of qualified teachers in front of our students obviously puts those students at a disadvantage. And it's imperative, if we're going to move forward, is finding ways to get teachers in our, in front of our students. Quality, qualified stu- teachers in front of all of our students. Uh, and that's something that they really hammered on. Um, they said that's really something in the other five districts that's gone through this process that everybody needed to increase their quality of the talent pool, um, so that we could do a better job with, um, getting in front of our students and providing them the best education. Another thing is just overall the quality of our, of our buildings. Um, you know, ensuring that every child has the same opportunities and the same resources. Um, another thing is how we spend money. And this was probably the second biggest behind, uh, the talent piece. Is that when we spend that dollar, uh, under federal or state programs, making sure that the investment, the return we're getting on that investment, um, is worth the potential risk of that investment not turning out the way you want to. Another thing is making sure that when we bring programs in, that if they're successful, we have ways to replicate it throughout the district. And we're not seeing, um, you know, like Dr. Staples would use an example today, and this wasn't at Richmond, what we've seen in other districts, is he may go into a school and reading was something they needed to address. So they go and buy a great reading program. And then over time, a second reading program gets introduced. Now they have two and over, and eventually all of a sudden you find you have four or five in the building. Well, which one's driving the reading program? Um, and, and I've seen that in my other two districts where, um, it just happened, it happens over time. But that's the thing that we got to stop. What we have to do is find a way to take the dollars we get under the state from both federal and state, you know, all the dollars we get, find a way to maximize that return on investment. And obviously, the first place is in the classroom. And ensuring that what we put in the classroom gives us the greatest potential for our students to be successful. So, um, that's the areas that, uh, the, the main things. Um, and, and, and making certain that, which I've seen in other districts, um, you get near the end of the year and the grant expires at the end of the year. Uh, and then all of a sudden, there's this rush to go buy equipment or to go just buy stuff so that you don't return the dollars. And that's not the best use of the funds. Um, you know, if you have a district that is making all fully accreditation, you know what I'm saying? And you're, you're, you're just humming, maybe that is the case. You just don't have something else to spend it on. But in our case, with the needs we have, we got to be prudent. And that's, that's us working with y'all on the budget process, quite honestly. And ensuring that we maximize that return on that dollar investment because we're only going to get a dollar. And we've got to be careful how we use it. Is it extended debt? Um, is it, you know, something early in the morning? Is it a Saturday academy? Uh, you know, we've got to get creative in what we do and we got to find a program that works and works well. And then we need to replicate that throughout the district. That's what they want us to do.
Ms. Ball, though, may I make a little?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, 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 I just wanted to-
No, I'm trying to do this.
No, I just wanted you to, um, go into a little bit more detail about how we spend our dollars and programs. And you can talk a little specifically about school improvement monies.
Unfortunately, you're catching me on my, my seventh day on the job. But let me say this, what I've seen is this.
I'm sorry.
No, 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 you're, you're fine.
You've done such a great job.
I'm just being honest with you. He- here's what I've seen though during the short time that I've looked at it. Um, everybody has the best intents, but because we're so big with 44 schools in our K-12, that it's easy to get kind of crossways with needs and programs. And I think, and I think David would agree with this, what we need to do from a financial standpoint is bring it all back into one and ensure that we're directing those dollars to the schools that have the great, not saying all our schools don't have needs, but please don't take it that way. But, but driving it to the schools where we can ensure we're getting the best return on that investment. And we're doing ultimately the goal of getting all 24,000 students the best education possible. So, um, it's really, we'll come back with David and I in the next, uh, 30 days. We're going to take some things in the budget and look at some things that we can do. But it's being creative with it and we'll work with our academic team and, and their experts at this. But we've got to create more consistency and we got to create more success.
Ms. Ball, though?
Thank you for your presentation, Mr. Krantz. And, uh, exciting to have you here as acting superintendent. I just wanted to-
I got to say, I'm nervous.
Oh, you're doing great. I, I think it's really important that, helping the board and I think the board has a sound understanding of this and a public understanding, the gravity of this memorandum of understanding that we have, uh, with the state and the ultimate objective to drive our, our schools to full accreditation. Um, when Dr. Kennedy and Dr. Staples came to our, our meeting, our, well, like in two meetings, uh, between the two of them and spoke with us, they encouraged, uh, that we provide feedback, uh, to them. And, uh, you know- And, you know, I think it's very important for us to really walk into this MOU with, with an approach that treats this as a partnership with the State Board of Education. And in particular, you know, I think it's, it's easy for people to take a look at the document first and get a little nervous by some of the language that we had seen early on, but I'm very encouraged by the fact that the state is already giving the feedback about making this document look more like a partnership. But in that vein, I'd encourage my colleagues to consider making a formal statement to the Virginia Board of Education via a memorandum of understanding with comments and alterations and as, as are reasonable, in order to ensure that we highlight the collaborative nature of the relationship and the partnership that we have with the state, and, and also to identify additional supports that the school board and the Richmond school may need to obtain full accreditation in this district. And, and also to ensure that to the extent that people are concerned about the level of autonomy that a school district should have, to, to find a balance where we can get the oversight and review that we hope to have in the state, but, but also maintain the level of autonomy that I think we, as elected officials in the public, as those who've put their trust into us, have, have come to expect from us. So, to that end, I would like to move to approve a copy of memorandum of understanding with the board's feedback, along with a letter to explain our intent of the feedback that we provided to the State Board of Education.
I went through it, Mr. Barlow, to change that song. So, there's a number of those, I think, you know, if we went through it, they addressed, you know, when we get their new document, there may be a few that they haven't specifically addressed, so it may be helpful to, you know what I'm saying, include, look at the new language, just to make sure, I'm thinking it does, you don't sum up.
So, to add-
May I second?
Excuse me?
Can I second his motion?
Sure. So, it's been moved by Mr. Barlow and seconded by Ms. Dorr to accept-
He's right.
I'd like to apologize for the legibility, it's a high-pressure situation when you're writing in this kind of situation. But, the motion is to propose a draft MOU as provided by the Richmond Board tonight with these comments and a cover letter highlighting the collaborative intent of the changes to the Richmond Board of Education.
Right, so it's moved by Ms. Barlow and seconded by, oh, I'm sorry, it's moved by Mr. Barlow and seconded by Ms. Dorr to propose a draft MOU as provided by the Richmond Board, School Board, in a draft cover letter highlighting the collaborative intent of the change to the VBOE document. Any discussion? Ms. Cosby.
I would like to, thank you for all of your hard work on the document that you proposed, Mr. Barlow. Given the fact that there has been recent conversations and some new information and some relaxing of the language, I would like to start off with that document and work on amending that, since you said that some things have already been addressed.
I think some of what Mr. Barlow, and I'm not a lawyer, so I don't mean to get into his people, but I think some are, or I think he would be, would be happy with, I think there's other points that maybe hasn't been addressed.
And just so that I can make sure I'm clear, our, well, you're expecting that the revised document will come to us within a day?
Yes, ma'am.
And we will have some opportunity for, for revision for feedback and-
Dr. Staple indicated that either Ms. Page or myself, or both of us, were more than welcome to forward to him any, because he's aware of the conversation tonight, and, and indicated that there may be things said tonight that we need to incorporate into, so he's prepared that we may be submitting further revisions, questions, comments.
And for those revisions, so, and would those revisions go before the VBOE?
On the twenty-sixth.
The twenty-sixth?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we have-
With a vote, with a vote on the twenty-seventh. Their intent is to have a vote on July twenty-seventh, they're not looking to push that back.
Okay.
So, Ms. Owen, then Ms. Dorr, and then Ms. Barlow.
So, my question is, if we get their changes, we can certainly respond to those changes, but we won't be able to vote as a board on suggested revisions before their being?
Okay, so let me comment-
Okay.
Respond to your question. So, in order for everyone to have an opportunity to provide input from the change document, revised document from the Board of Education, board members can provide feedback to me by the twentieth of this week, and that's Thursday. We could convene a special meeting on Friday the twenty-first or Monday the twenty-fourth to review all input from everyone and vote on the language and to submit it to the Board of Education by the twenty-fifth in preparation for their meeting on the twenty-seventh. In that way, everyone will have an opportunity to provide input.
Ms. Owen, to ask my question, so I'll-
Mr. Barlow.
Yes, Madam Chair, I appreciate that approach, but I'm very concerned that time is, is of the essence here. And I do think that we're in a position where we can at least provide the feedback that we want at this point, but I would be very worried about putting ourselves in a situation where we're waiting an extra few days to compile feedback, and even longer to provide the feedback to the Richmond Board of Education, because I'm not sure that it really gives time for board members on the state level to, to consider the feedback that we presented. Now, I'm certainly of the mindset that we could start with this, and to the extent that people wanted to add additional feedback on top of that, or we want to, to take a look at some of the comments and feedback that they provided, that we'd be in a position to do so. But at this point, I strongly urge my colleagues to consider and to vote to approve this document as it is, and both documents to send to the State Board of Education, and then to the extent that we want to provide supplementary feedback, to consider doing that at a later date. I certainly don't want to find ourselves in a situation where we're scrambling or trying to compile a lot of feedback at the last minute, and don't find ourselves in a situation where we can provide a useful document to the State Board of Education.
Ms. Manser.
I agree that it would be worth putting feedback forward that we've agreed on now, that we could sort of figure out what that feedback is, based on the letter that, that Mr. Barlow has put forward. I don't see any reason to wait unless, I understand they're going to be giving us a revised document to address some of it, but if we, if we have feedback that we feel strongly about, I think it's worth getting it to them sooner rather than later. I would also say I really appreciate and support the feedback around just making this a more collaborative process, which I think others accept.
So, in our meeting today with Dr. Staples, he did stress the fact that they would, again, will send over their revised document that also will allow opportunity for board members to give feedback and to provide, send them feedback by next week. So, he was amenable to that, so every board member could have the opportunity to look over the document and provide feedback and again, respond by the twentieth of this week, which is Thursday.
So, so you're saying he, he is willing to wait for an official vote by like next Monday night?
It's Friday or Monday.
Which only gives them two days, and he's okay with that?
So, Mr. Krantz, just make sure that, um-
So, can you see what we got on that talk, yes ma'am?
That we heard the same?
Yes, ma'am, we did, yes, ma'am.
So, Ms. Dorr.
Is there any harm in sending this feedback right now, acknowledging that we know that they're working on some additional changes, just so that we make sure that we get something in front of them this week as opposed to waiting a few days before they vote?
Is it with other boards? So, if we can call the question. Ms. Young.
Madam Chair, thank you, I just wanted to convey my gratitude to all parties, but in particular, those persons that conveyed my concerns, reservations as it relates to the superintendent in vacancy. The original draft MOU limited, in my opinion, it limited our capacity to identify the best person, the sheer heat for the job, and I'm very pleased that that limitation from what has been conveyed to me has been removed. So, to all persons at the party, to that collaborative process, I convey my gratitude.
Call Dr. Sapini.
Yes, like Frank, Frank himself, I was speaking with Dr. Staples today to get them more clarification, getting updates, and thank you, Mr. Barlow, for bringing together this, back in the eleven, everything. I would like to see the revisions, as well as yours, kind of put it together, and see where they made the changes and really see, you know, rather than make blanket, taking whatever you sit down, I like to see exactly where, to get a better feel for where they could potentially further make any changes or not.
Call the question.
Motion was made by Mr. Barlow, seconded by Ms. Dorr, to propose a draft MOU as provided by the Richmond Board, and a draft cover letter highlighting the collaborative intent of the changes to the VBOE document. Ms. Dorr?
Yes.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Manser?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Cosby?
No.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Ms., Dr. Sapini?
No.
Ms. Page?
No.
Motion passes five, three. The next item, three point zero two, this is the front, three point zero three, received exit interview and current vacancy there.
You have coming across a summary of exit information as well as a questionnaire that when employees do complete it, they're asked some general questions about the HR function. In close, we have a detail, however, it's got identifiable information on it, the council, that will give you an opportunity to actually see of the ninety-five people who did do their exit, their comments, and what they thought of the process. Generally, it takes about fifteen and twenty minutes to go through it, and it'll kind of give you a good, I think, overview of what the group thought the challenges were that we were having inside the district. Our intent is to take that information and work, obviously as a district, to correct those things that are perceived to be weaknesses and turn those weaknesses into strengths. So, I'm not going to go through the whole entire detail there in the summary, but it gives you something that we can run at any time for you, okay? I mean, you know, that's a-
Yeah.
Is it going as written? It's going as written?
Okay.
And I had a change to review the cover letter, and that's what I named it, so. Next item?
Next item, three point zero two, this is the front, three point zero three, received exit interview and current vacancy there.
You have coming across a summary of exit information as well as a questionnaire that when employees do complete it, they're asked some general questions about the HR function. In close, we have a detail, however, it's got identifiable information on it, the council, that will give you an opportunity to actually see of the ninety-five people who did do their exit, their comments, and what they thought of the process. Generally, it takes about fifteen and twenty minutes to go through it, and it'll kind of give you a good, I think, overview of what the group thought the challenges were that we were having inside the district. Our intent is to take that information and work, obviously as a district, to correct those things that are perceived to be weaknesses and turn those weaknesses into strengths. So, I'm not going to go through the whole entire detail there in the summary, but it gives you something that we can run at any time for you, okay? The second information you have is the one that I would spend the time on. This right now reflects without including bus drivers or custodians, just on our instructional side, the vacancies. As of right now, we have a hundred and sixty-three vacant positions. Those positions are broken down as follows, twenty in the elementary schools, five in the elementary special education group, one hundred and eight in the secondary schools, thirty in our special ed secondary schools, for a total of one sixty-three attached. You will find the schools and the subject matter. Will be, we just received this information. With this, we'll be working with our HR group to ensure that we're getting the talent necessary to fill these vacancies on or before September fifth. Now, last year, if you recall, the district had about fifty vacancies when we started the school year, if I remember the number about right. Our goal, just like our goal on graduation is a hundred percent, we're not going to go short, we're not going to say some, we'll say all, that's our goal. So, our goal is to find qualified teachers for all of our positions between now and September fifth, that's the goal. And that's how you need to measure us, okay? I know it's a challenge, but if we don't set the bar for what it should be, we ain't going to ever reach it. So, when we leave this meeting, beginning tomorrow morning bright and early, we'll be directing a lot of our attention and resources. We've made some changes that I would prefer to just discuss in close, but I think we're moving in the right direction, we're going to pick up the speed tremendously start tomorrow morning. We're going to pick up the speed tremendously start tomorrow morning. Okay? And we will update you weekly now with this information. We'll send it out via email so that you're not waiting until the next meeting, you can see what's going on, okay?
Ms. Young.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Krantz, are you able to provide an apples-to-apples comparison, i.e. where we're...
We're trying to, I wish I had it because that was one of my goals tonight, but let me see what we can pull together, okay? But that, yes, sir, I'm trying to get you an apples-to-apples comparison. Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Barlow.
Thank you very much, Mr. Krantz. It sure seems like you've got our work cut out for us when it comes to recruiting these teachers, but I appreciate that you're at the helm to help us do that. But I also hope that this triggers a conversation, an opportunity for us to discuss over the course of the next school year, how we can take better efforts or take more efforts to really work on teacher retention, and I encourage all of us to take the time to consider that and to take a look at the climates in our schools and how we can be more supportive of our teachers.
And, Mr. Barlow, you're right, but I think that's where, when y'all read the exit comments that you'll get, that we'll talk about in close, I think it gives us the best indication of the things we need to address if we're going to reverse that trend and we start keeping more than a little.
From the podium here, I'll announce that the next item is three point oh four, to receive the two thousand seventeen General Assembly summary and proposed policy revisions, and I'm here to do that. I just want to clarify that this is not, one of the services that we provide to you each year is this particular General Assembly summary. I don't want it to be any confusion, we're not your lobbyists, that's not what we are doing for you, but after each session is over and we've been able to kind of ferret out what's been approved, what needs to have policy changes made, what informational items need to be drawn out of what's been approved through the legislation for the particular year, we've already put together this particular summary, which is attached to board docs, and I believe that there are some copies out in the audience or is up on the table, which arranges the legislation in accordance with your policy manual. So, you have your bylaw section, your personnel, your students, et cetera, et cetera, so that you can see at a glance here what legislation affected, which policy area, which section of your policy manual, and you will also note in this particular summary where there are policy changes that need to be made, and as I said, where it's just informational or requires some regulation change. And to the extent that we're able to, we put the policy numbers that relate or somewhat relate to the informational or regulation change policy, change items as well. So, that is your General Assembly summary, and that's this document here that you'll see on your posting. The next packet of information for your receipt and review, and I would give the caveat that we ask you, as always with all of your policies, because this is one of the critical duties that you do have as a board, to enact policy, to review all of your policy changes very, very carefully. If you have questions and comments or revisions, and we need to, you know, have a second, we will have a second read of these policies, certainly, we're not going to approve them, ask you to approve them tonight, but in the meantime, please review them very, very carefully. Some of the policies that are listed in your policy summary, which is this particular document that is attached to a thicker packet in the back, will tell you why we're making or recommending that particular policy change. Some of them come from the General Assembly items that we have in this particular summary. Some of them are from your federal legislation. We know that the Every Student Succeeds Act made some amendments to some of the United, to the federal law, and so you'll see those in there. And then there are several that are board-related slash administrative-related, which we take the time to bring them to you now so that we're not sprinkling policies throughout the year. There may be another set that we bring to you in a few weeks or so, but these are, this is the crux of them now. So, I just, for the benefit of those that are here, do not have the document that will be watching, I just want to kind of just, I'm not going to read you the summaries, but I just want you to highlight some of the policies that have been affected with proposed revisions. School board members' conflicts of interest, the school board meetings, the agenda preparation, minutes and dissemination minutes and recording of board meetings, the electronic participation from remote, in meetings from remote locations, access to school board records, your visitors' policy, and this, again, is an example of your board slash administrative initiation, if you will. We know that we need to do some updating to our visitors' policy, and we talked about that in the past, so those updates are provided in this particular packet. Community use of school facilities, instructional goals and objectives, career and technical education, driver's edu, driver education, family life education, public charter schools, school guidance and counseling, school transportation, application for, excuse me, application for positions, hiring, employment of family members, school employee conflicts of interest, drug and alcohol-free workplace, staff, weapons in school, professional staff, conditions of employment, employee absences leave, employee discipline generally, parental involvement in education, student records, school personnel, excuse me, school service providers' use of student personal information, admission of homeless children, student attendance and absences, intruency, open enrollment, home instruction, bullying and other threatening behavior, and administering medication. So, those are the policy titles, if you will, for the, again, not wanting to go into all the detail, if you wish to go into them, you can, but just, again, for the audience and for you to know that if you heard something that you want to make sure what's being changed, please look at this policy change, the revisions packet, and provide your feedback. I'd ask, so that we can prepare this for our second redraft for your next meeting, that any comments or questions be given, and you can send them directly to me or call me if it's easy to talk through them by July thirty-first. Are there any questions or any items you all wish to discuss publicly now? Say that again? Okay, we can get you a hard copy, it is on board docs. It's, it is under three point oh four. There should be two attachments there. Is it on? Okay.
And you need feedback by...
July thirty-first.
Next item.
The next item is item four, your budgetary items, four point zero one, received a quarterly financial for Patrick Henry School in Science and Arts. Those documents were provided on the board docs.
Any questions?
The next item is... Four point zero two, received a financial statement for the month ended May two thousand seventeen.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. As we did every month, we come to you for your receipt of our monthly financial statement. I will make a few comments. It is included on board docs, we do not print copies, but we certainly can. Our revenues and expenditures continue to accrue as we anticipated. We have posted a big five million dollar transfer for transportation, so we see the transportation is no longer in a deficit position. We do see that we continue to have some excess budget in our, some of our full-time positions where some of our non-contractual or part-time salaries are in a deficit position, but we're accountable for all of those. We do believe that we will add to fund balance again this year when the time is right, and as soon as we can give you an accurate number, we will come back to you with what that information yields. We continue to see that we have the fourteen million dollars in the capital fund, substantially below fourteen million dollars, that was designated for specific purposes to help out with overcrowded schools. We've used a little bit of that, approximately three million from the original appropriation to support some overcrowded schools, the Broad Rock Green and Reed primarily. Also, our grant funds, which Mr. Krantz had talked to just earlier, that received significant scrutiny from BOE, they continue to accrue, but we are anticipating that there will be a significant amount of additional emphasis and review over those funds in the coming several weeks, and this will be before you for approval once you get to your next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you. Oh, sorry, the next item, if I can go ahead and go forward, is presentation on the impact, I think, of the elimination, substantial elimination of our internal audit function. It's, I forget my case, sorry, we're double teaming our technology. I did not print this document, but I would like to talk through it. Before I talk about the document itself, as all of you know, internal audit functions, audit functions in general, are extremely important to every organization, especially large organizations that rely not on specific oversight of every transaction every day, but understanding, documenting, and reviewing internal controls to make sure that those internal controls are accurate, to make sure those internal controls are well-designed and they are functioning the way that they were designed to ensure not only that we don't have unintended consequences, fraud, transactions that will provide some negative consequence, but also that we create the greatest efficiency possible. In two thousand and fourteen, I believe, was the last date that we had a, what I would call a poll functioning, internal audit function here. We have since that time only had one internal auditor, and in the fall of the fall of last year, maybe August of last year, the previous school board voted to allow us to hire some outside audit assistants to help with our school activity funds. So, with that as a backdrop, what I've provided for your board docs, and please, at your discretion, go through and take a look, this is, this is an annual audit plan that was in place here in Richmond schools. What it documents for all of us is what an internal audit function will do, but in the essence of time and also in the essence of clarity, especially for our public, there are two primary functions. One, to make sure that our student activity funds, which do not go through our centralized internal accounting system as a separate accounting system, they have separate bank accounts, they have separate signature authorities at each school, so to make sure that those activity funds are being operated in the fashion that they should, again, we have, we have no waste, we have no fraud. So, that's one of the primary functions that internal audit provided for us, and the one auditor that we still have still provides some of those services. So, the combination of our one auditor plus our outsourced, Cherry Becker is our outsourced auditing firm, the combination of our one auditor and Cherry Becker, we're very confident through that process that our activity funds are being audited on a monthly basis, and we're comfortable that the controls that are in place for our activity funds are active and we are, we are monitoring those funds the way that we should. Additionally, we have a staff person and administrative person in finance that provides training and in-school help and support on an administrative side for our bookkeepers to make sure that they are up to speed, especially with turnover, with how to use our student activity fund system. So, that's one of the functions, and at this moment, that is substantial, all of the function that we have with our internal auditor and the outside internal audit support. The part that we're not doing, and this is, I think, maybe the point of the discussion for tonight, if you look at the bottom of the screen, it talks about audits based on risk assessment and requests. This is very typical, that an audit function will work through a risk assessment. So, what is the risk, for example, that we are paying people through payroll that we shouldn't be? What's the risk of we are paying people through vendors, through accounts payable, that we shouldn't be? What's the risk that we've had somebody at Human Resources set themselves up to be paid, they're receiving pay, and they shouldn't be? So, you'll see this list, exceptional education, those are unusual dollars affiliated with end-of-year carryover, our purchasing function to make sure that we are, we are working through the Code Virginia requirements as well as our own policy with regard to hiring vendors. You see payroll transactions, we have a number of, you'll see insurance and risk, worker comp, that all of those folks that are receiving payments through our risk function, those, all the documentation is done appropriately, and those payments are being recorded accurately. So, those are our risk assessment-based audits. We are not performing those audits at this moment. I'm not saying that they're being done inappropriately. What I'm saying is the folks that are in charge of each of these areas are responsible for ensuring that the controls that have been developed and are in place, those controls are reviewed every year, that we are following those controls to make sure that we are not having any issues in these areas. That's what, what an internal, or if we wanted to purchase external audit services, that's what those functions would be. So, that's the area that has been not reviewed as thoroughly as potentially this board may want. So, that's, just kind of wanted to make clarification. Student activity funds, I think we're in pretty good shape with that. The operational audits based on a risk assessment, typically on a revolving basis, those are the areas that are not receiving the same amount of attention that has been received in the past. So, that's kind of a big picture, certainly happy to talk about any level of detail, but before we go forward, if this is, the next item, we're going to talk about a budget process, and if this is something that the school board may want to talk about, maybe thinking about through a budgeting, budget planning process, could potentially be the right time to have that discussion. Doesn't mean we can't talk about it tonight and multiple board meetings before we get there. So, I'll look to the board for guidance.
Ms. Young.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, it's troubling, at least to this board member, what you just conveyed, I have a concern about what you just shared, and though I'm really pleased that student activity funds are regularly being reviewed, in grand scheme of things, it's not even pennies on the dollar, it's less than that, if we juxtapose it with the real pockets of money, and so what you shared troubles at least this one of nine, and I would look forward to initiating a lot of dialogue about how we address my concern.
I too share those same concerns, because with the information you just provided, we're the same concern, I guess, maybe ten years, ten years ago, where we had, well, this was before I served it the first time, but the ad hoc committee was created for the audit, and we had a lot of stakeholders that participated in that process because... the audit, and we had a lot of stakeholders that participated in that process, because our internal controls, they were all a whack. Um, no one was overseeing that side of, of the house, and the board has the responsibility, because that's the board's employee, but they have the responsibility to provide an oversight and also direct that position and the functions, you know, of deposition. Not only do you audit the student activity funds, but you want to tie your system to see where your weakness is, the strength of the school district. So, I too look forward to further discussion, next steps to addressing this process.
I will, thank you. I will share that, as we look at some prior audit programs, probably the equivalent of one person's full year of hours would be able to address this risk assessment, and then on a recurring basis, a periodic recurring basis, be able to audit all of these areas to a sufficient level. So, we're not talking about five people, ten people. Primarily, we're talking about the equivalent of two thousand hours a year, primarily is what we're talking about.
The next item is four point zero four. Discuss the next steps in the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen budget management process.
What's, um, what's being passed around is the budget calendar for the process that we used last year for the budget that's in place this year, as of two weeks ago, and also a potential process that the board may want to consider going forward as we work through the budget process, really starting in a couple of weeks. I hope this discussion will be fun. It certainly will be different from the budget process that we went through last year. And it is a beginning point, and as all of you who have worked with budgets and financial processes, there are a variety of ways to get to a point in time. Ultimately, as we get towards March, April, May, we're going to get to the same point where you will approve a budget that will go to the mayor, mayor will ultimately approve a budget that goes to city council, city council approve a budget, and it'll come back to you for adoption. What we're talking about is how do we get to that point in time? How do we make sure that we have a way to align our resources to the specific need at each school, and how can we maximize our resources? So, the calendar that's on the screen is what was used, as I said, for the budget process that we just went through. And without really going through this a lot, because if you look at the top of the, the calendar for the seventeen, eighteen year, you'll see it didn't start until October. Now, that doesn't mean there, there weren't things that were being done. There certainly were. But the collaborative nature between the board, the administration, the schools, and the community wasn't to the level that what I heard this board express last year. So, what we have brought before you tonight is potentially a way for us to increase that collaboration in a, in a way that would be more to what the board had in mind. And of course, this is just an example. It is something that obviously will change. But I would like to walk through this, and what I'd like to say, that this is the proposed nineteen calendar. Something that you'll note at the top, it says August and September. So, these are things we would do together. This is a collaborative process, and the very first thing you'll see, it talks about policies and adopt school board goals. So, this is how we work together. This is not the budget finance people bringing ideas to you. That's not how a collaborative budget process works. If we can work together on what the school board's goals are, if we maybe can schedule a day or even a couple of days to talk about, as you work through what your direction is, how you'd like the administration to help provide information about achieving those goals. We want to plan with the board's support, sit down with each principal and their team over the next sixty to seventy-five days, take all the information that they need, all the, all the resources they currently have, work through what those resources are, look at, at the direction they think their school is going in, where they want it to go, and have them tell us the resources they feel like they need, and then bring that back to you. So, we feel like if we can start to work from this, so working on skills, working on a vision and direction, working with the community about what those goals are, bringing these needs from each school, then we can develop our own budget goals, not just school board goals, or the goals of the budget itself. We can bring that, bring that to the community, and the community will understand what we're trying to accomplish with the budget. And then bringing those specific resources by each school becomes a lot easier for the community to understand how we got there and where we're trying to go. So, as you look at the first part of that calendar, this, you'll see that this is significantly different than how this was done last year. A lot of it is still, of course, done internally. We look at our estimates on staffing. Certainly, we look at the kids that are there on the first day of school, and the kids that are there on September the thirtieth, when, when we're supposed to have our drop done. And then we start to look at competitive compensation. We start to evaluate the impact of our different benefit plans. But all of this is happening concurrently with our, our public looking at the school board's goals, the budget goals. That's all happening together. While we pull data together behind the scenes, the public is having input into how they feel about the school board's direction, and how they feel about the goals of the budget itself. We certainly can bring examples of that to you for your review. This is a process that has been used successfully in the past with many school divisions. Some folks call this school-based budget. Some people call it zero-based budget. I like to call it just good common sense, that you sit down with the schools and talk to them about what you have and what you need, and how do we match that to where we want to go. So, this is, again, is just for discussion about the timeline. We may not get school board goals done in August. We might not. It's okay, though, because we're going to be talking about them. We, we may not get a full set of completely aligned budget goals done this year. If we don't, we don't, but at least we're moving in that direction. It's my hope that we'll hit every one of these targets. But, so this is something for you to consider. We, we don't need a vote tonight. Just if you would look at it at your convenience and just call me, get back with me and say, well, this sounds sort of good, but I really think this, we will certainly incorporate those into a document. We'll keep all the comments, sort of like the MOU, and we'll continue to refine and revise this process as the board, the direction that you want to go with this process.
Ms. Menzner, and Ms. Dorr?
Thank you for this. I was so excited to see budget on so early, and very excited about the process of sort of school-based slash zero-based budgeting. Can you talk a little bit about, that makes sense from the school side, from central office side, what might be different with how you go through the budgeting process?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for asking. One of the things that we're going to do this year, and, and I don't know that, that, like a lot of things, some percent of what, which what you don't know is correct. You just don't know. So, one of the things that we're going to do differently is the, and this will certainly help us with our documentation for our MOU with the state. We're going to look at all of our, our non-salary purchase service, purchase, the equipment lines, and we're going to get the list of exactly what you're going to buy. So, it's not, we're going to go back and see what you bought, but the folks that are going, that are going to have the authority to spend those dollars, they're going to tell us in advance. They're not going to say, oh, we're going to buy support for students. No. You're going to tell us what it is, how many of them you're going to buy, and what it's going to cost.
Ms. Dorr?
Yeah, I also want to thank you for this. I'm very excited about also the addition of community engagement and school board engagement, and starting earlier. I, we've talked a little bit about school-based budgeting and zero-based budgeting. You know, to the extent we can avoid the situation that we had last year, where we rolled over the whole budget into next year, and so we definitely need that, plus more, being a little bit more thoughtful about the budgeting process. So, on the school-based budgeting side, I think that's fantastic, and to the extent we can move over time to providing more autonomy to our principals, so that they can help make those budgeting decisions themselves, that would be inclusive for them. And then I would encourage us on, from the central office side, to incorporate a zero-based, some version of a zero-based budgeting in central office, so that we start from scratch, figure out what our needs are. And then as part of this process, I would love to see a review of our external contracts. And then lastly, some way to address what Mr. Krantz was talking about with MOU, and how, how we can make sure that we structure the budgeting process so that our budget is tied more to outcomes than it has been past. But I think this is an awesome start, and I'm super excited about it.
Thank you.
Ms. Young?
Well, I concur with everything Liz just said. I'm really excited about the opportunity to do things very differently, and I want principals to control more the purse strings as they relate to the budget in their buildings. Frankly, I want principals to run their building like they are CEO. And so, I think this constitutes an awesome first step, but I'd like to go further. And as we do consider this new process, I hope that the budget process will also, of course, the overwhelming majority of funds relate to FTE positions. And so, I hope that we would also genuinely solicit of our principals candid counsel perpent to those FTE positions, and allow for them to have some discretion in moving FTEs around within their building. And I think if we do that and provide principals that, that kind of latitude, then I'm confident a really special thing can happen. But like my colleague from the first, I'm really excited about this, and it's a huge, huge course correction in a big way. So, my hat's off to David and his, and his team, and to the entire administration on this.
Ms. Menzner?
So, just jumping off of the comments around principals having sort of more control over their budget, I'm wondering if it might be possible for principals who have comfort with budgeting to even let a few principals dive in a little bit deeper, even this year, of like, starting with zero-based budgeting in their buildings and sort of building that out. I've had experience doing that from an executive director position running nonprofits, and it's a really valuable way to understand all of the ways in which you use money and the strategies behind them, when you're really diving into your budget, more than just saying, I need X, Y, and Z. Could be an interesting way to begin helping principals take that kind of ownership.
I think that's a great idea. Something that probably a lot of us have seen over the past, high school principals that are good at managing their money, train other high school principals on how to manage their money. And I think that's a great idea to get, to get principals involved across the board.
Thank you, Mr. Myers. Thank you for bringing this forward, because I know you and I have had many discussions about the budget process and what we experienced when we first came onto the board. So, thank you for putting in the work and providing this information. Looking forward to our next budget process.
I will say it's a collaborative effort with all of us and Ms. Bragg and her team. So, I, I hope that this budget process will be fun. I know that a lot of times these two things don't collide, but I hope this year will be one of them.
Right here.
So, board members, the information that's going around now is for the Richmond Public Schools Education Foundation Board of Trustees. We have applications, I'm sorry, resumes for three individual, four, I'm sorry.
Too many extras.
How many, how many seats are open?
Yeah. Didn't know if I had to be called up.
Please.
The question was how many seats are open? We are authorized, first of all, for those of you I haven't met, my name is Ty Tepke. I'm the new executive director for the Education Foundation. I've been on the job for just under a month now, and this is my first work, so nice to see you all. The question was how many seats are available, or how many seats are open? We are authorized by our bylaws to have up to fifteen seats on the board. This will actually fill us up. We may end up having one board member step off and refilling out another board member who would not be ready to present that yet.
So, with all of these?
With all of these, we will fill ourselves up.
Okay.
I see a married person on here. I like it all ready, I like it all ready.
Good try.
We've got a former twenty-year RPS veteran, which is really exciting. Also gives us a great connection to VCU School of Education, which is something that I've wanted to build out a little bit. Phil Reser, also a former teacher, Pastor Donna Coleman, who I'm sure a lot of you are familiar with, and William Williams, oh, Mr. Mills, who is a fantastic fundraiser, and as a fundraiser myself, I'm excited to have his expertise on board to just help me build out some of the fundraising capacity for the foundation.
Okay. Other, Ms. Dorr, you have a question? So, we need a, we need a motion to approve?
I do have a question.
Ms. Young?
Can you speak to, just real briefly, thirty seconds or less, what your process, what your process is in identifying candidates or in identifying your preferred candidates? Do your existing board members have an opportunity to weigh in and provide counsel per these recommendations?
Yes. So, actually, these four people that you all are seeing, I've never met any of them except for Pastor Coleman, who I knew personally. The board led the whole process before I got here. We have a governance committee. They handle the process of sourcing and interviewing and bringing on board members. I, we are going to become a little more strategic about that, thinking about how we fill some gaps we've got in terms of representation from a couple of segments of the community that I'm interested in. But overall, the board drives that process through the governance committee.
And also, board leadership serves on the board for the foundation.
Yes.
I'm going to be one of these four.
You can say the names.
Right. David J. Mills, Donna Coleman, Sandra Tormon?
I think so.
And Thomas Beatty.
Second?
It's been moved by Ms. Owen and seconded by Ms. Dorr. To approve David Mills, Thomas Beatty, Sandra Tormon?
Tormon.
Tormon, and Donna Coleman to the Richmond Education Foundation.
Board.
Board, I'm sorry. Richmond Education Foundation Board. Any discussion? Hard question?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Aye.
Professor Saffini?
Yes.
Ms. Dorr?
Yes.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Ms. Menzner?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. The next item is.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
To receive full action, a delegate, an alternate delegate to the SVA.
So we need a motion, and earlier during the year, Ms. Door was interested in becoming the delegate, but saying that.
You may not be available.
Yes, you may not be available, so we need to recommend another board member, we need to recommend a delegate and alternate delegate to the SVA. Ms. Owen?
I was just wondering if she could do the delegate, and then we have an alternate. You have how long this is going to take for?
A year.
So after a couple months, she can probably.
But I'm tempted to come back. But I'm also happy to be an alternate, if someone else would prefer, or I'm happy to, there's someone that feels quite passionate about it, I'm happy to give up the seat, so. If there's any volunteers that really want this opportunity, happy to step aside. Okay, well, it would be my pleasure to continue to serve and have an alternate.
So Ms. Door as the delegate, and we need an alternate.
What is the question?
Ms. Menzir? They, they need a few times a year at the big conferences, so it's really like demanding, it's probably four times a year. But you'll get enough notice in advance. So we don't have any, I'll be interested in serving as an alternate. So we need a motion.
I've moved to select Liz Door as our delegate to the SVA, and our chair, Tom Page, to be the alternate delegate to the SVA through the school board.
It's been moved by Mr. Barlow, and seconded by Ms. Owen. To name Liz Door as delegate, and Donna Page as alternate delegate to the SVA. Any discussion? Seeing we have none, call a question.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Sapini?
Yes.
Ms. Door?
Yes.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Ms. Menzir?
Yes.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. The next item is 5403, to receive for action, human resources actions.
Madam Chairman, you would ask, when the administration came upon, to be given HR consideration in close session.
The next item is to receive for action, school board travel and district activity requests, I do not have any, but Ms. Cosby, thank you.
So colleagues, I am asking the SVA to use the school board. Digital, digital. Schools, lines to support the efforts of National Night Out, which is in the sixth and eighth districts. It is an opportunity here to provide that school supplies for young people. We already heard our presentation, so I would like to support the cost of select school supplies, and the $750 one second. In the sixth district, there is an organization we'd like to learn, Tappanagul. They have a summer school enrichment program, which is designed to, to stem the summer slide, that so many of our young people experience. This organization, they have people from RPS who volunteer, teachers who volunteer and work with young people pre-K through, I believe, the fifth grade, and wants to give $500 to help with the cost of the program.
All right, so before, so I would like to add on to Ms. Cosby for the support of the school supplies for the National Night Out as well. So Ms. Cosby provided clarity.
She did, the question was whether or not, just for the public's knowledge. The question was about the, supporting the program at the church, and certainly with public funds, we have to make certain that the program itself is not religious in nature. And Ms. Cosby, I don't know if she wants to reiterate what she just told me, is that the program is based off of Richmond Public Schools curriculum?
Right.
And the students, it is not Bible-centered or religious in nature. And wanted to bring that to the public's attention as well.
Need a motion? So it's been moved by Ms. Door, and seconded by Dr. Sapini, to approve the use of digital activity funds for the National Night Out for the sixth and the eighth district. And. And the summer enrichment program. Any discussion? Seeing we have none, call a question?
Ms. Menzir?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Door?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
I'm staying.
Ms. Cosby, yes. Dr. Sapini?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Motion passes seven, eight, zero. The next item is just an other informational item for the board to review, and these documents are on board docs for your review, and they are the information regarding gathering facilities, an update on the facilities data, so those documents are on board docs for your review, board docs for your review, I saw. Next item is item set. Your other informational items are not for discussion, they're just for review for the board, and they have been posted to board docs. If you review them and have questions and want to come back to another meeting, share that with the chair, and then we put on another agenda for discussion.
And we'd just like to recognize Ms. Door and Ms. Menzir for the information that they provided for the facilities and rezoning information. Ms. Young?
I have to raise a go speaking out of order, and inquire if there's an opportunity to amend the agenda, to provide for some conversation about, about that information.
We've already amended it in the beginning. Is the motion?
What was the motion?
This other informational. So the motion is, was moved by Mr. Young, and seconded by Ms. Menzir to amend the agenda to allow for discussion of the other informational items, update on the gathering of facilities data. Any discussion? Call a question?
Ms. Door?
Yes.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Menzir?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Dr. Sapini?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Motion passes seven, eight, zero.
Ms. Door?
Thank you, board members, for amending the agenda. Apologize if there was a bit of a miscommunication, I was under the impression we were going to update tonight, so glad to have the opportunity to do that. So as you all know, a couple months, about a month and a half ago, Ms. Menzir and I were assigned to an information gathering group as it relates to facilities and rezoning. Over the last month and a half, we've had several meetings with Mr. Krantz with two goals, one, to tour facilities, specifically those that we have heard routine complaints about the quality of the facilities, but also to tour facilities on the south side where there is overcrowding problems, et cetera. And two, to review the work that has been done already, as it relates to the facility's need to report and the facility's task force. We also, in these meetings, reviewed OPTA Option 5, Facilities Plan, and you can see some of the notes from our meetings in the, in board docs. First recommendation that we have is because this was an information gathering group and not an official ad hoc committee, we'd like to recommend that the information group changes to an official ad hoc committee with the board. So I'd like to make a motion that we formalize the information gathering group, change it to an ad hoc committee.
It's been moved by Ms. Door, and seconded by Ms. Young, to change the information gathering group, gathering information as an official ad hoc committee for facilities. And rezoning, and rezoning.
As the, I'm sorry, as the facilities and rezoning ad hoc committee, is that, okay?
Discussion? Ms. Door?
I think I was very honored to have been a part of this committee. I think that the future ad hoc committee should have representation from both the north side and the south side, as Ms. Menzir and I are both on the north side. My recommendation would be for Ms. Menzir to continue the work, so that we continue the momentum, but that we also add in a south side representative. I would propose Ms. Owen to serve as that, in that committee.
You accept?
So we need to formalize the committee.
Yeah. So we have a discussion right now, so Ms. Menzir. Right, with respect, respect to. Formalize the committee.
Thank you, and thank you for the opportunity to discuss this tonight. I just wanted to comment a little bit on the why now question, and why the committee thought, the information gathering group thought this was important. As we will hopefully get a chance to discuss a little bit, the state of the facility at George Mason, and some of the others that we toured, we felt that it was important that we not get ourselves into other high-risk situations by being able to evaluate facilities early in the year, so that if there are other changes that need to be made quickly, those can be done with forethought and planning and purpose, so that we're not facing urgent situations like we were in our George Mason.
I have a statement, comment. Board members, we're going in a slippery slope. We're talking about. We are working outside about purview. I think it is unfair to the administration not giving them the opportunity to vet this process and to plan properly, and to bring back a recommendation to the board, so that we can make a decision. We understand that our facilities have major issues. George Mason, George Mason is at the top, but we also have to consider funding in our CIP. Also, we have to consider the process, the stakehold that has been passed around, we're not taking into consideration how this is going to impact staff, teachers, the families, transportation. It's a domino effect. We cannot undertake something that's going to have an impact on our children, that may possibly disrupt the academics. We have to allow the administration the opportunity to plan and to bring back the recommendation to the school board. I think many of you have had conversations with Mr. Krantz. We, what, less than two months of school opening? We're planning to opening of schools, and Mr. Krantz can speak to that. I, I think we are playing a dangerous game, because as the last board did, they rezoned in isolation. And we have, it's been a domino effect. We have schools that are under enrolled and over enrolled. So Ms. Door, Ms. Menzir, and Mr. Barlow.
So, Ms. Page, I actually agree with everything that you're saying. If you look at our plan, you have a timeline that includes working with the administration. I think it's of utmost importance that we continue to work with the administration on their recommendations, as it relates to George Mason, which is not the action on the table right now. All we're simply asking is to formalize an ad hoc committee. But as it relates to George Mason, I would agree with you. We put together, as you asked, some information as it relates to George Mason, for us to discuss and talk about. My recommendation would be for Mr. Krantz to take that information and make a recommendation to the school board in a timely manner, which we can discuss in a minute after we're done approving this ad hoc committee, if we're not approving it. So I appreciate that, I think we're actually on the same page. I agree wholeheartedly that we need to take in academics, that we need to be working with the administration. I think our plan illustrates that we want to have as many stakeholders at the table as possible, and we've been working with Mr. Krantz, we've had, included him in every single meeting that we've had. So I think I completely agree with you, and all we're asking is to just formalize the ad hoc committee, so that we can continue the work that we're doing.
Ms. Menzir?
Thank you. I was just wondering if you could clarify, is your response to the. Thank you, I would, I was just wondering if you could clarify your, is your response to the formalization of the ad hoc committee or if you were referring to George Mason?
No, I was just making a statement on our role as a school board member, and if ad hoc committee, it's fine. But we need to give the administration the opportunity to vet the process and properly pl- plan and come back with a recommendation to the board at the appropriate time. This is discussion, and that's what we're having, we're having a discussion. Mr. Ballough?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I'm encouraged, uh, to see that they're, uh, taking some action to, uh, to get discussion of facilities back on the table. I know that we've had a lot of community members and, uh, the former board and many other stakeholders, uh, who have taken time to consider, uh, the facilities needs of our districts, and, uh, I'm hopeful that this, uh, the approval of this ad hoc committee will, uh, really take us in a step in the right direction towards ensuring that we've got, uh, equity when it comes to the facilities in our school district. And, uh, I'm not convinced that at this stage that we do, and we need to make sure that every student in our school district has a quality learning environment. And, uh, I'd also, uh, like to hear if there are other folks who may be interested in joining the, uh, the committee.
Ms. Owen?
Well, I, thank you for this, go on, um, sorry, Madam Chair. Um, but it seems to me that number three and number four, our executive retired that year, care for, manage, and control the property of the school division and provide for the erecting, furnishing, equipping, and non-destructual operating of necessary school buildings and appurtenances and the maintenance thereof, and provide for the consolidation of schools and redistricting of school boundaries. And so that's, that's what we're talking about here for this ad hoc committee to be considering. I don't think anybody's, I hope, deciding in lieu of the administration, but I do think that it is our job to be looking at the facilities, redistricting, maintenance, um, thereof. So, um, I fully support the, um, this ad hoc committee and the work they do. And I will just say that if we have more than two, it's just because you can't have a meeting without going through hoops and playing hopscotch. But certainly, that's why there were two, I think, to begin with. But we had three on the ad hoc committee for, um, we were talking about the superintendent and the, what's the evaluation? So there were three on that committee, and, and we managed to do it, so either way is, is fine with me.
So, Ms. Ms. Erb and Ms. Door, because it was not a formalized committee, it was just two, but yes, ad hoc committee will, um, consist of three board members, so we have you, Ms. Owen, and I see Ms. Cosby.
I have, um, I have a comment. I mean, I can serve, but I have a comment as well, I have a comment.
Ms. Cosby?
Sorry, for the confusion. Um, I just wanted to, for me, add some clarity to Ms. Page's concern, and I hope I'm not speaking out of turn. Um, and you're right, this, this is our duty, and I'm glad that we are, we have buoyed it to the forefront. And when we talk about equity, it's not just the bricks and mortar, but it's the academics as well. Um, so I wish to be very clear about that. Um, but I think the slippery slope is that part of the recommendations for George Mason were, um, as we looked at even our MOU from the state, very prescript- prescriptive. So, I think that, for me, um, those very detailed recommendations, I think it is something that has to be vetted by the administration, and then they come back and say, what is feasible and what's not, given the, of course, there is an urgency, absolutely, but it has to be tempered with, do we make, make a bad situation worse? And by not vetting it with the administration and making sure that we cover everything, including transportation, how we communicate with our parents and our families is very critical. So, um, that, I know that was one of my issues with the, the recommendations for George Mason, although, you know, I, I liked looking at several recommendations, but I do think it has to be, it has to go through administration to see what can be done now or later, or, you know, what's just in the best interest of our, of our youth.
Mr. Krantz?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Um, while I appreciate the ad hoc committees, which we all work with on the former board, um, a couple things. One, there's a lot of work involved in this process, and obviously with the MOU, our prioritization, just as we understand it, there'll be challenges. As I mentioned during the conversation on the MOU, the intent is, is that we will have the CAP, two y'all as a board for adoption on, before November first. And, and as we've been told by the state, that's extremely aggressive. Now, we've been hitting the marks with them so far to date, and we continue to do that in, in showing them how serious we take the process and that we're committed to getting it right. So, um, for my prioritization, just, I would appreciate if you would keep that in mind. I appreciate the ad hoc, but again, there's only so much of time that's available to juggle all the balls that we've got. And we do have, obviously, the second one is, you know, finding the staff, that we have quality teachers in front of our students. Right now, we said there's a hundred sixty-eight open positions, but there's really two hundred thirteen, when you start adding in custodians and bus drivers and everybody else that we have. So, that's a lot of positions for us in the district with the September fifth opening coming up. That's forty-eight days from right now. That's it. So we're in countdown mode, um, to that. I would ask that as part of the process and part of even George Mason, that, um, allow the, and, and allow us an opportunity as the administration to put forth, and will, and, and I'm willing to do George Mason outside, but, but... There's, when, when we look at the facilities, every dollar we spend in capital is twenty-year money. So once that dollar's spent, you don't get it back for twenty years. So we're really fiscally prudent on how we spend that dollar. Right now, it's my understanding from the city, they don't have any funds until 2023. Um, the district faces significant challenges, and I'm on the record, so I've said this since my first year here, George Mason is the worst building in the district. However, right behind it, and, and George Wip, with a growing, it's the only building in the district over the next ten years that's projected to grow each and every year. And we're adding two hundred fifty students on top of that right now. Um, El Park Thompson, significant building that in 2012 had, uh, environmental challenges. Um, we continue to add students there, we're changing the culture in that building from where it was in 2012, and that's presenting some unique challenges for our, our staff, and you'll see that in the closed session, the comments that are there. So, would, if you would allow us to do, to do our job as the administration, come back to y'all with our recommendation, um, I think it would, it would make the process move, and you would see that, that we can get it, get it done. Okay?
You're saying not to have to?
No, ma'am, I like the committee from the standpoint that it gives me board members to bounce ideas off of, but we, we, we've gotta agree that, that, I mean, it can be time-consuming, because once we get going, um, it goes. So, um, you know, as long as we're all willing to do that, which I'm committed, y'all know that, I'm committed to this district and seeing it turn around, whatever it takes, um, but, but let us, y'all pay us a lot of good money to do this, let us go forward and do it well, I mean, that's true. So, let us go forward and do our job.
Thank you. Ms. Door?
Uh, can I, can we, I would suggest that we call to vote on the ad hoc committee, and then, there's been some discussion about George Mason and next steps there. Um, I, I think Felicity made some good points, I would recommend, I have a recommendation for an action next step, um, but can we call to vote for the ad hoc committee first, and then?
Well, we haven't complete, completed the ad hoc committee, so we have Ms. Owen and Ms... I'm chomping at the mouth. So, we have to, um, vote on formalizing the ad hoc committee for facilities and rezoning. Motion was made by Ms. Door and seconded by Mr. Young. Ms. Ms. Door?
Yes.
Mr. Ballough?
Yes.
Ms. Menzir?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Dr. Sapini?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Motion passes eight, zero. So, on the committee, Ms. Owen has agreed, and Ms. Menzir and Ms. Cosby. Dr. Sapini? So, Ms. Cosby, you...
No, Dr. Sapini.
Okay. So we have Dr. Sapini, Ms. Menzir, and Ms. Owen.
Is that a motion?
It's, no, you don't have to.
And just remember, before you have a meeting, schedule a meeting, you need to notify the clerk.
Yeah.
So...
So that she can notice the ad hoc committee meeting. Ms. Door?
So, to carry on the discussion about George Mason specifically, um, uh, Ms. Cosby, I, I agree with your comments. I do think that we need to make sure that they are, they are vetted by the administration. Um, you know, I think the reason why George Mason gained the forefront, um, was in, was a number of different reasons. One, it was one of the first schools that we visited, um, routinely described as the worst school in the district. Uh, we had a number of teachers, um, visit us about a month ago to talk about the deplorable conditions there. And unfortunately, I think because we haven't taken action on, uh, longer-term facilities plan, um, things like this have gone without action. And that is unfortunate, and I hate making a knee-jerk reaction, but I couldn't, after touring that school and learning more about it and talking with the teachers there and the parent community there, I, I felt like we needed to move forward with at least continuing the discussion. Um, so, I don't know if Ms. Menzir has any additional comments?
Ms. Menzir?
Um, I agree, um, uh, wholeheartedly, and I think our, our intent of bringing this information forward was to ensure that, um, the board had a chance to take this conversation into consideration. I think that, that there are liabilities to consider, um, with sending kids back into George Mason without doing anything. And so, we wanted to bring as many options to the table as possible. Um, we would love to recommend that the administration, um, take some time to re, to evaluate what all the options are, are there options that are missed that we should be considering, um, and that we convene again in, um, whatever amount of time that the administration thinks that, that you need, um, to review those options, um, and, and make a decision on what, what we do. Um, and I think it's important for us to, to recognize that doing nothing is, is an option. I don't think it's a very good option personally, but I do think we need to consider all of the options and understand that if we decide to send kids back into the school without improving conditions, then that's the option that we're taking. Um, and we need to then live with that as a board.
So, what I'm hearing, that we're directing the administration to vet this process so they can properly plan and bring back to the board at the appropriate time. Mr. Krantz?
Yes, ma'am, and be advised that, um, there are certain buildings we track regularly, just doing indoor air quality and other testing to ensure that the buildings are safe and sound. Um, you saw that when we had an unsafe building at El Park, you know, action was taken immediately to move forward with that. One thing that we need to consider is that as, um, we move a school, there's a process that we follow. And, um, it's important that we do that and then don't create more problems down the line. So, you know, we've not had a real opportunity on this one to vet it like we traditionally would vet. Um, we're willing with my, my construction group to, to begin the vetting process now that, that, that seemed to be the will of the board. Um, but I can assure you, we will do the things necessary to the building to ensure the safety of our students and staff, okay? Which we do in everyone in our building.
Ms. Door?
Mr. Krantz, um, how long will it take you and your staff to properly vet the George Mason options?
Can I have a morning to talk to my team?
Sure.
Please? And I mean, I don't mean to dodge it, but, um, let me have an opportunity to talk to that team, if you don't mind? If that's the will of Ms. Page and the board, I appreciate that.
That's fine, I would just argue that, you know, I...
The clock's ticking, I understand.
And to the extent, I, I would love to set up a special meeting to discuss George Mason at George Mason, so that we can weigh community concerns, um, given the gravity of the, the situation, so...
So in the document that we passed around, when we were talking about relocating our children, it requires a public hearing, an opportunity to get feedback from the parents, the staff at the school, and that's a ten-day notice for a public hearing. And you all have, board members have the information in front of them. Ms. Young?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Krantz, uh, by now, I suspect every, everyone tuning into this conversation is conscious of the fact that among the options includes relocating George Mason students in time for the new school year. I concur with all my colleagues when they acknowledge that we need to thoroughly vet all of the different options. My question of you regards if, if this board should arrive at the decision that it's irresponsible to return students to George Mason for the, for the coming school year, how much time would you need on your end, pertinent to logistics, to implement a decision? And my question specifically regards chronology and, obviously, if this board chooses to take no action, then it's immaterial. If however, this year, we decide that it would be irresponsible to return students to George Mason, would it not be best to convene that conversation and debate center around the lawyer? So my question regards how much time do you think your team would need to actually implement a relocation?
Well, I mean, one, I need, like I said though earlier, I need, I really do need to talk to my team, okay? Um, we, you know, without, without speaking today, it would be premature for me to put a date out there, and I don't want to speak for them. But the vetting process that we go through is, and it's just like what we did within option five of the, of the task force report. We sat there and the, the city council continued to beat the school system up because we had fifty-five hundred empty seats. And so one of our, our missions under the, the task force was finding ways to reduce the amount of empty seats we had in the district. Um, and honestly, one of the items that was there was looking at schools where the majority of the empty seats are located. And that wasn't about the academic program in the schools or anything like that, it was about where our empty seats were located. And, um, in, in two of the schools that are being discussed in this whole process right now with George Mason, we're on our list, and we're discussed. Um, and there are challenges with, um, case in point, you've got two schools that are each thirty-four classrooms. And we're saying, okay, one school is using thirty-five, because they're using two rooms that we, by state code, we don't count as a classroom. The other school is using nineteen of the classrooms, so when you look at just the straight, now, numbers of students, you think, okay, they're...
Everybody's using thirty-five.
Right.
She's using nineteen.
Um, but when you look at what the schools are using, but we... But when you look at what the schools are using, but we know, schools have a tendency that if they need ten and they have fifteen, they're going to use all fifteen. So, that's where we go walk these classrooms and we walk the buildings with the principals and we map it out ourselves and say that it can or cannot work. If that happens, then we're working with, in this case, because the staff's not there, how do we get ahold of all the staff and coordinate the move of their items? And we would have to move two schools. We have to move School A to School B, whatever they are. And we looked at more than just Franklin and Community, by the way. There was other options. And then Mason to whatever that school is. So, that's a lot of moves. And already on our plate, we have the RCEA build out that, you know, we've got to account for. Then, if we get the staff and if we get it built out, I mean, get everybody packed, then we better find a way to give it back into the, map the school, you know, room ten here going to room two here, move it, and then give the staff time, which they start coming back on August the twenty-third, with an opening of September fifth. So, the timing of it is unfortunate. It's just, it's very tight. It's extremely tight. And-
I'll help Chair Box.
But it's not, I mean, it's my transportation. It's just all of the infrastructure. We just have to put a lot of work together, so that's why I said, let me talk to my team in the morning and I'll get back to y'all. It's just, there's a lot of moving pieces. It's not just simply, you know, we're doing routes right now for eighteen thousand students. Okay? We say, oh, well, let's just change it. Well, we just changed over it. Over B is going to Clark Springs, so that was a change. Now, we got to change with RCEA going, you know, moving. So, all of that impacts the transportation team and getting all their routes done because right now, we should be going final on our route so we can get it published and out to parents. So, there's just a lot of, the timing is just not ideal. But we'll look at it and we're diligent, and I'll get back to the chairman tomorrow. Okay, but let me talk to my team.
Ms. Dorr?
I'd like to make a motion that we put a community meeting on the calendar for ten days from tomorrow. Mr. Krantz, with the caveat that Mr. Krantz can amend the timeline if his team needs more time. And I'd like to have that meeting at George Mason.
Okay.
Let me second that.
It's been moved by Ms. Dorr and seconded by Mr. Young to have a community- Okay. A community meeting at George Mason. Ten days. Ten-day notice, notification. Ms. Lilly?
I just want to, a point of clarification, because I'm trying to follow, you know, what the purpose of the meeting is with respect to the decision that the board may or may not make regarding this particular school, other schools, et cetera. So, the public hearing in and of itself would be an announcement to your communities that the school division is considering one option, two options, moving this school to that school, this school to this school, or what, whatever, because this is a permanent type of deal. And so, your public hearing, it doesn't sound like, based on what I'm hearing, would come into play at this juncture until you're down the road with the, with having the administration having vetted the plans and then coming up with whatever you're going to vote on as the plan, right? And so, you know, you would not have your, you can have a public hear, you can, excuse me, you can have a community meeting, but when we talk about your ten days, that is for your public hearing with respect to whatever decision you all are going to make or consider making with respect to whatever options you're going to make, whatever schools you're going to touch throughout this particular plan. Does that make sense as a distinction?
I think that's precisely what this is.
But it doesn't, it doesn't, no, I mean, based on what I'm hearing, the administration would not have, are they making a recommendation at that point in time, or just what?
We asked the administrator, Mr. Krantz?
I mean, I guess, Ms. Lilly, would be, the cannon to me would be to get the public, whatever the vetting we would sit, okay, and the possible ways to address the facility challenges at George Mason. It would be discussed, those options with the community.
Okay, so-
You see, you see what I'm saying? So, so let's say there was two options.
Right.
Okay, or three options that we said, okay, we could comfortably do. Here's the pros and here's the cons of those. I'm just picking them up. That at that, that public meeting, you would have the discussion and review what we found and get the community's input to say, you know, you thought about this or you didn't think about that. You know, just like we did with the Facilities Task Force before that report went final and we brought it to the board, you know, we did all the eighteen meetings within the community. I'm thinking it's kind of the same process here.
I guess, I guess where my question comes is, you know, I look at the documents as well and I see eight options on here. And so, I guess, some of them, of course, involve, you know, may not involve movement or anything like that. And that's one, that's, you know, that's one thing. But I guess, when you have your public hearing, what are you presenting as your options, which I understood would only come after the administration has had an opportunity to vet and recommend then to you all. I, I mean, but you, I only put that in there because I don't want people to confuse a public hearing, which you can, you know, which is, you know, the terminology is here in the code, with a community meeting. And if it's your intent to have a public hearing, that's, I just want to make sure we're in our correct posture. Right, and your public, and you, right, and clerk is reminding me, and the reason why I am asking is because the public hearing notice says the school, you know, the school board of the city of Richmond is considering moving X school, Y school, Z school. And, and if that's, you understand, so we need to have more for not, I guess, more of a fine-tuned recommendation, if you will, if, you know, rather than just alerting, you know, you've got several, you know, at least four or five schools here that, you know, may not even be feasible at this point in time. That's, I guess, that's where I'm at.
Ms. Cosby, Ms. Dorr and Ms. Young?
So, Ms. Lilly, in terms of process here, so you're saying, really, the process would be to allow administration to vet these options and others, and then to bring it to the community for discussion and to talk about the pros and the cons.
My statement is more so for, to say where, I guess, where I am is the legal ramifications of a public hearing or your ten-day notice. What you, what you indicated represents what I thought I heard, you know, just sitting here. But as far as your process of your public hearing, when you're telling these, you know, we, we've had public hearings or required to have public hearings when we've rezoned the school and we have an option A and an option B of rezoning, we know the slate of schools that are going to be affected. You know, we've had a, we had to do one for consolidation of Elkhart and Thompson. You know, those types of things, so we were able to name, these are the schools that are going to be affected to the public with this recommendation. And so, that's why, you know, you know.
And I'm sorry, just another point. And if we do something like that and involves community, well, it's not just George Mason. You're talking about community.
Oh, no, that's what I'm saying, there are several schools that are-
Franklin, all of the schools that are involved that would participate in this public meeting.
I'll defer to Mr. Young.
Thank you, Ms. Dorr. I don't want to speak for the person who made the motion and who seconded it, but as I understood it, we would come together as a group, we would hear from the administration subsequent ten days, or it's actually fourteen days if we're talking about the thirty-first, on what they are recommending to do with George Mason. Stay in place, stay in place for six months, stay in place forever, move to Franklin, move to Henderson? I don't know, but the point, that's how I understood your motion and that we would be able to evaluate that recommendation that evening in concert with recommendations from, we should spot on, with all the relevant schools. That's how I understood the motion, but perhaps I misunderstood.
That's how I-
Ms. Dorr?
That's how I characterize the motion, but is that a public hearing?
It depends on if you are intending to vote on something.
Yes.
And if you are intending to vote on something, then you would need a public hearing to identify to the public the schools that will be affected by whatever decision you're making. And so, how that comes about, you know, I'm not going to get into, you know, involved with, you know, how that comes about, but, or how it needs to be vetted or what have you. But, you know, you just need to, like, for instance, like I said, there are several schools listed here that if ultimately your administration says is not feasible to do, do you as a board want to have put them on notice that they may be moving or closing or whatever? You know, you know what I mean? So, I think that that's, that's where, you know, you all can have, I just want to make sure you understand the ramifications of when we say a public hearing with respect to what you've been provided with the code. And that's why it says that you can have it at the same meeting where you make the decision. So, if it is then, if it is the intent of the board to make a decision at this particular meeting, then yes, you do need to have a public hearing, either ten days prior to that or notice that, notice for that particular meeting, you know, ten days in advance. Yes.
So, let's hear from this superintendent.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. What the administration's willing to do is in two weeks, and I hope my staff will pay attention right now, but within two weeks, we'll come back to the table. There's only two schools, though, that Georgia Mason could be moved to. The two schools that are impacted, because we've done this within the Facilities Task Force. It would be Franklin Military or Richmond Community. Those are only two schools that are possible options. So, our intent is in two weeks, we'll come to the public meeting, present the pros and cons of the things that we consider, just like we did during the Facilities Task Force community meetings, and give a recommendation of what we, as an administration, believe is the appropriate course of action. Take the comments from the public and then at that point, you know, it's up to the will of the board on what course of action y'all would like to proceed. But we're, I'll, I'll make that commitment. We, we, we will, we will get it done.
Ms. Menzger?
Mr. Krantz, is you, when you just said that the only options are Franklin and Community, what about the option of sending their information to students to the elementary schools that are, that are close to the-
But that's a, that's a rezoning process. What we've talked about is when you're moving-
That is the same, okay.
What that would do is, when you start talking, there's lots of options. But when we talk about the schools, as we were talking with Ms. Lilly, then the schools that you're closing and or moving would be just a Franklin and or a Community. Okay? Which I'm not making any recommendation at this time, so please for the record, let me make that clear. You've got the other option. You've got the option that George Mason, their issue with the gas gets triggered when the boilers come on. Those boilers won't be coming on until probably sometime in November. When those boilers come on, there's a small valve that, because that building was built in nineteen twenty-two. There's fifteen buildings, including Mason, that are over seventy years of age in the system today. There's another fifteen buildings that are over fifty years of age in the system today. So, we have thirty of the forty-four K-12 buildings that are greater than fifty years of age. In order to maintain a building, we should get funding at two percent of our replacement costs. Two percent of replacement value is seventeen million dollars a year approximately. Our average funding is about six million dollars a year between M and R and CIP. So, there's lots of buildings that have issues. And the, the, I want to make sure we all understand that there are other buildings that are in the same state or very close to what George Mason is today. And some of those buildings, we're getting ready to add lots of students to them. One of the buildings, we're getting ready to add probably three hundred and fifty students to that building this school year. That's a real challenge from a, from a building standpoint. But we will, we will in two weeks, completely vet it, come back at the community meeting and give you our recommendation, one of which could be, we do some things inside the building for a short period of time while some longer-term discussions are held. Because ultimately, under the task force, the recommendation was to build a new George Mason elementary. That's what we believe is in the best course of action for that community. And, you know, today, I still believe that that's the best course of action. Unfortunately, there's not any new construction dollars there to do. Okay? But that's what we can, we can get done. I'll have it done in two weeks.
I know, you know, with my-
What?
Ms. Owen?
No, that's not, that's not the discussion.
I would like to step out to see, as a chair, a point of privilege. No one disagrees that George Mason is not a problem, is not an issue. I don't think any board member disagrees. We know it's an issue. But what concerns me, they're going in a slippery slope. We are playing politics at the expense of our children. I'm a parent, and that's unacceptable. Our role is to govern. Our role is to make policy. Our role is to receive recommendations from the administration. This deep, this concerns me. We need to be focusing on the MOU, instruction, but instead, we want to play politics at the expense of our children and using our children at George Mason as a pawn so that you can make a political statement. It is unacceptable. And so, we, we hear from the parents, we hear from the community members at George Mason, but the stories, the stories are disheartening. But I'm not quite sure if we're all hearing from the same people. But we cannot play politics at the expense of our children. Thank you.
Ms. Dorr?
Well, I just want to state for the record, I'm not trying to make any political statement. I'm trying to do what's best for our kids, just like everybody else on this board. So, I'm sorry if you think that, but I'm just trying to do my very best. I saw a problem, I felt like we needed to take action, I'm making a motion. If you disagree with that, you can feel free to vote against me. Thank you.
We all have opinions. But when you're carrying the agenda for other people, that's concerning. Ms. Menzger?
I'm sorry.
Thank you. I would also like to state for the record that I walked into George Mason and I walked into Elkhart Thompson and I walked into George With and many of our other schools. And I put on my hat as a parent and said, would I want my child to go to school here?
um, and I put on my hat as a parent and said, would I want my child to go to school here? And I do not. And if it's not okay for my kid, then it's not okay for other kids, and I do believe deeply that everybody on this board agrees with that. I believe it deeply that we all care about the kids in the same way. I think we disagree on when and how things might need to change, but I think, I, I wanna give everybody the benefit of the doubt that we all care about the kids.
I think this is a very tense discussion and a very serious issue, and we're gonna encounter a lot of really intense discussions and a lot of serious issues as board members. Um, but I encourage us to all think about why we are here, and I think that if any of us are carrying agendas, it should, they should, for other people, they should be the agendas of students who are in our buildings and who are being taught in our school system. And when we're talking about that agenda, we have to look at the state of our facilities, and we have to look at the safety of the stu, of the students in our facilities, and if we have a gas leak, and we're in a situation where we need to cross our fingers and hope that it doesn't get too cold before November, then we need to explore options to make sure that our students aren't in harm's way. And I think that this meeting will allow us that opportunity. If one of the options is to find a way to plug the leak, so be it, but if we have to take other actions to make sure that our students are safely, are safe, then I hope that we're all willing to do so.
The motion was made by Ms. Dorr to have a public hearing on July thirty-first at George Mason to discuss the options for George Mason. Is there a second? Or was there a second?
Second.
Ms. Dorr?
Yes.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Mintz-Ehr?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Dr. Stapleton?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Motion passes eight. The next item on the agenda is new business.
So, board members, as a reminder, yes, we will be sending the document over to Board of Education, but also, once we receive the revised document from Dr. Staples tomorrow, board members will have an opportunity to provide feedback to me by the twentieth, this Thursday, that we can, um, provide to Dr. Staples as well. Next item?
The next item is closed.
Madam Chair, pursuant to personnel section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven, subsection A, subsection one, and subsection seven, we have a joint agreement with the school board to sit in the meeting of the section in order to discuss perspective and be a reminder that we are in a position to accommodate the disciplinary resignation of the, the potential to be considered in the resource agenda of this day and cast, and two, for consultation with the council, probably the litigation employee matter of one, six, seven, and actually the rest.
Yes, ma'am.